All right, everyone, we are now streaming live. Looks like Tony is now joining us.
There is.
Still connecting to audio.
There we go.
Hi, Tony.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. We've, we've got the stream going and we've got the recording on and Kim was just asking Ryan to talk about the over/under.
Did he decide who was reading each resolution already? Did I come in late?
No, we were waiting for Tony to, for that, so we'll do that after.
Okay.
Okay. So get in, for some reason it was.
Looking good.
Yeah, well, you know, gotta have a little tree in the background and. Ready to go.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Oh, just kind of keep this brief and just if you have any questions, just please butt in whenever, whenever you can. The, I'm just gonna give it a high level estimate on the, on our salaries. At this point, we're looking at our salaries coming in at sixteen million, two hundred and seven thousand dollars. That compares to our modified budget of sixteen million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that's up thirty-two thousand dollars. It's up about zero point two percent. Very, very close to budget. A couple of things that are driving that. One, we did not budget for the Associate Corporation Council position. This is a fully funded position via a grant, so we will have a corresponding increase on the revenue side, as we did not budget for that revenue as well. On the other big driver of our salaries coming in over budget is the fact that we renegotiated our contract with one of our bargaining, bargaining units, the CSCA. Union, we renegotiated that this year in the middle of the year, so with those, those retro payments and increases were not budgeted. So, so that is another component of what's driving our salaries over budget. At this point in time, you know, we, going back to March and April and the spring, we were able to cut out about one point one million dollars out of our budget due to all of the COVID pandemic that was happening. At this point, we're looking at about a two point one million dollar decline in revenues against our original budget. So, taking into account the, the two point one million dollar shortfall in revenues and then the one point one million dollars in expenses that we cut out, we're looking at probably a budget deficit this year of about a million dollars. And other than that, I didn't have any other key callouts. I'm gonna know if anyone had any questions, specific questions on the over/under resolution.
No, at some point, Ryan, I would like to go over some of that with you more, a little bit more detail. But no rush this week.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions about that?
Is that assuming there'll be no money from the state?
Say that again, Jeff?
I said, is that, is that number assuming that there'll be no money from the state, like in the past?
Um, so that number is assuming that we have a twenty percent reduction in state aid, which has already happened. At this point, it has already happened. We received our first payment in September at a twenty percent reduction and then just this past week, we received the second payment and it was at a twenty percent reduction as well.
Okay, all right.
But you were referring to the extra million? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what I was referring to in the past. There has been that, that excess in the past.
The excess we have not received yet. I am in process of submitting an application for that and the assumption that I'm, that I'm going into that with is that we'll have a twenty percent reduction in that as well.
So, okay. So if you assume that, assume that we do get that eight hundred thousand, that makes, that makes the, the loss much smaller, I guess is the best way to look at it. Correct?
No, so the, the two point one million dollar revenue shortfall includes a two hundred thousand dollar decline of the million dollar original budget. Yes. So if we, if we got a full million, that would be a two hundred thousand dollar benefit.
Okay.
The, the one million is banked into Ryan's number.
Gotcha. Minus the two hundred thousand.
Correct.
Okay.
Just want to make sure everybody understood that. Very good. Any other questions about the over/under before we assign our resolutions? It is seven thirty, so Kim, do you wanna?
Sure. Marie, can you do one through six? I'll do seven through twelve.
Okay, let me just get there. Kim is gonna do. Seven. Under Public Safety, Brett, how do you want to do those?
Tim, will you do thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen? Jeff, will you do sixteen and seventeen?
Yes.
And I will do eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Okay.
And that's it, right? Nothing else under Public Works. Right, so that's just twenty is the magic number. We don't have anything else for new business. So that's it. Okay, so we should be good to go. There's twenty resolutions and they are all assigned. All right, so if we're ready to go, we'll start, I call this meeting, the final meeting of the year of two thousand and twenty, December twenty-eighth, City Council Voting Session to order with a clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
James?
Here.
Karuba?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Eklund?
Here.
Graham Reinhart?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And President Dulce?
Here. This time, do we have approval of the minutes of the November thirtieth voting session?
Don't move.
So moved by Councilwoman Eklund. There's no vote required. Do we have any messages from the mayor tonight?
We do. We have one message from the mayor. Dear councilmembers, in December two thousand and twenty, the City of Jamestown Park's Recreation and Conservation Department awarded Thelma Milton with the Joan Chevry Citizen Forester Award. Ms. Milton has been a dedicated member of the Transplants Garden Club and has participated in tree planting with the city for the past twenty years. I am asking that Ms. Milton be acknowledged and recognized for her outstanding efforts at the December twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty City Council meeting. May you have a safe and healthy holiday season. Very truly yours, Edward A. Sungquist.
Thank you. That's it for the messages?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other petitions or communications tonight to be read?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. If not, then we'll move on to the reports from our standing committees and Councilwoman Karuba from the Finance Committee will read the first six resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing payment of the regular audit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
He said aye.
Okay. James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution designating the depositories for the City of Jamestown for two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Is he muted?
He keeps muting in and out too quick.
Thank you. James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and council members to attend various meetings in two thousand and twenty-one with expenses paid pursuant to section seventy-seven dash B of the general municipal law. And I would like to note that when council members attend, there is nothing in the budget so that they would attend at their own expense.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution adopting the current procurement policy for the year two thousand and twenty-one based on recommendations from the State Comptroller's Office.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the City Controller to effect the two thousand and twenty general fund overdrafts.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution recognizing the various contributions to the City of Jamestown from private agencies.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Thank you. The next six resolutions will be read by the Chairwoman of the Finance Committee, Councilwoman Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution increasing the fee for the production of certified copies of birth and death certificates to thirty dollars for the first copy and ten dollars for each subsequent.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Jeffrey Lehman to purchase from Jones Chevrolet twenty-one five oh five Route Six, Warren, PA, one six three six five, a new two thousand and twenty-one Chevrolet Silverado, thirty-five hundred, in an amount not to exceed forty thousand, five hundred ninety dollars and no cents, subject to the approval of Corporation Council as to form. I just want to also remind everybody that this was part of the capital budget and also is a replacement for an older vehicle.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one with R. Patty Concrete and Excavating, P O Box three zero eight one, Jamestown, New York, one four seven zero two, for concrete work two thousand and twenty. Bowen Street, Price Street to Newton Avenue contract for a total decrease of ten thousand, forty-two dollars and fifty-two cents, subject to the approval of Cow, Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one with G L Olson Incorporated, fifty-five twenty-nine, Thumb Road, DeWittville, New York, one four seven two eight, for ADA restroom addition at the Jackson Taylor Park for a total increase in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and no cents, subject to the approval of Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I missed the note that I just wanted to note that the project will be funded with Community Development Block Grant, C D B G, ADA Improvement Funds.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign any documents related to the submission of the two thousand and twenty-one New York Main Street Grant and further authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents with the New York Department of State should the City of Jamestown be successful in securing funding through the C F A submission process.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? The clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Thank you.
And finally, out of finance, I have a resolution authorizing the council to retain W C A Services Corporation, D B A All-Star E M S, located at twenty-nine Maple Street, Jamestown, New York, one four seven zero one, as authorized billing agent for the Jamestown Fire Department and City of Jamestown and authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to execute any applications, forms, or agreements pertaining to the billing accounts and statements.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Thank you. That concludes our resolutions from Friday. We'll now move on to the Public Safety Committee and the first three resolutions will be sponsored by Councilwoman Graham Reinhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution establishing the two thousand and twenty-one regular meetings of the Jamestown City Council.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Tony, I just have one question. It doesn't, this just establishes the dates. It doesn't establish where we're having the meetings.
No, just the date for now and, okay, again, we'll.
We'll see what happens.
Right here, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution designated the Post Journal as the official newspaper for the public, for publications for the period of January first, two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund? Aye. Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Thank you.
I have a, thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution granting games of chance or bell jar licenses to various organizations for two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Just a brief comment before these first three, in fact, some of the other ones in here. We do this just for the public's sake every November. These are just regular routine things that we have to clear up. Post Journal being our official newspaper for our official meeting notices, the meeting dates, and also approving licenses to the various organizations. So just wanted to make that clear for people who haven't been through the process and we normally do this in December. Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Thank you. The next two resolutions will be sponsored by Councilman Russell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the Board of Public Utilities to install one one hundred and fifty watt LED equivalent fixture on pole number one eight nine two zero on Euclid Avenue.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Just a brief comment on that. That area, there has been some issues with security and safety and the residents in that particular neighborhood have been asking for a light there. So we'd appreciate the council's support on that. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an ordinance amending chapter one seven five dash three D, as in delta, of the Jamestown City Code relative to fire department fees.
Any questions or comments? Not, clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Last three resolutions coming under Public Safety will be sponsored by the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an ordinance amending sections one sixty and two twenty-four of the Jamestown City Code relative to glass collection and to amend the time of solid waste recycling placement at the curb.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yes, you have it. Um, I'm disappointed that this, that the city's no longer collecting glass. I understand that it's a cost issue, and so I would just encourage people to please make sure that they dispose of the glass properly and not put it in the trash so that goes into the landfill and to be mindful of our environment. Um, so that's just all I wanted to say.
Mr. President, I'd also like to comment and thank not only the Chair, Chairman Brent Sheldon of Public Safety, but Dave Leathers from the B P U and also the Mayor's Office for allowing people to put their recycling at the curb at four P M. Given the shorter daylight hours in the winter, it's very difficult for some of our older residents and I really appreciate the courtesy being given to the safety of our residents, having to put recyclables out after dark. So thank you very much for that.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to remind people that you can still separate your glass and take it to, you should talk to County Transfer Station in Faulkner. I will be doing that. I'll probably be taking some of my neighbors' glass there as well.
Want to take mine?
Too many bottles.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, the clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Nay.
Uh, Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Thank you.
It was President, I have an ordinance amending section two four zero dash one four of the Jamestown City Code relative to unpaid sewer rents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just want to clarify, this is just to bring it in line with some of the other divisions on, on the way that we can go after some of these unpaid rents.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Thank you. Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Thank you.
With President, I have a law, local law, amending the city charter and general legislation to establish a chief police and fire chief.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
This is just separating the two positions, eliminating the Director of Public Safety position that we've had in the past.
Mr. President, I'd like to comment. I think, given the state of our budget and the fact that we're looking at a deficit already, I don't think it would be prudent to take this measure. It has been working fine for the last many years under Chief Snellings and I would expect the same would continue under Chief Jackson.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to?
Is there, there's no change in payroll or anything for this, correct?
Uh, I don't believe so. Ryan, if you want to speak on that, Ryan Thompson, before we vote?
The Director of Public Safety position received a seventy-five hundred dollar stipend under, if this change was made, that would no longer be the case.
Will that in turn increase the fire chief position, which will be different than what we have currently?
Let's, I guess I'll let the mayor answer that question.
At this time for the fire chief position, we intend to keep it the same since the budget has already been passed. What we do plan on doing is establishing in the management guidelines updated salary ranges, which we will circulate to you all for the January work session.
Do you anticipate a change then, or we have to make an adjustment?
We, we do not anticipate any changes in salary at this time, except for the police chief with the stipend going away. We will want to adjust that to make a correction for the police chief, but we do, we do not intend any additional salary amounts at this time with this change.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, when you say at this time, does that mean for the, the whole year of twenty-one or maybe something in mid-twenty-one? Or would it be start in twenty-two?
There would, there would be, there would be nothing mid-year change. It would be just what the normal salary would be. We would have some adjustment right now. The police chief in public safety would be entitled to the salary they're at now plus a stipend. We are looking to make that into a salary range through the management guidelines, so it'll actually be slightly less than what we'd have paid with the salary plus a stipend. But we would then, as of two thousand and twenty-two, it would go back to the normal budget cycle.
Thank you.
Mr. President, um, given the in really conclusive decisions that are made about this at this point in time, I will not be supporting this. As you can see, we're here at the ninth hour, voting on a local law that impacts people financially and also the city operation as a whole. The charter and all that is written was such as a deputy fire chief and a police chief, a director of public safety, and a lot of questions haven't been answered. I, for one, also have never been fully satisfied with the answers I received from civil service. So at this point in time, I'm not supporting this resolution. Nothing to do with the personalities of the two chiefs. I expressed that to the police chief, Jackson, personally, that my vote for no is nothing against either one of them. It's the process and the principle of it right now. When the original plan to go to a director of public safety and police chief years ago, there was a financial plan backing that and a savings and an estimated plan on how that would work, and we haven't seen that. So me being concerned about the finances, that is my direction at this point.
I just have a question. Would we be able to, or can I make a motion to? I just have a question. Will we be able to, or can I make a motion to table this because of all, all this new information that is coming out just now?
Can make that. Make that motion.
I, I like to make a motion that we table all the local law until further information is gathered.
My understanding that because it's a local law, it would have to be, if it's, if we pass the table, it would have to be reintroduced and then tabled again. Is that correct, Elliot or Jen? Because it's not a simple resolution.
Right.
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 So, I believe you're correct.
So if the council's choice was to table the resolution, it then pretty much puts it into not till at least, it could be reintroduced. Is there a waiting period for re, to reintroduce it, a local law, or could it be reintroduced in January but then could not be voted on until February? Is that how that would work? I'm just trying to make sure everyone understands the impact of tabling this at this point. It's not a simple resolution. It's a local law. If anybody wants to answer that, I don't know, the mayor or the Corporation Council or the clerk wants to talk about that. Anybody? I mean, I, I don't.
Not at the moment on the timeframe. Obviously, it wouldn't be this month, and we would have to have discussions going forward when the reintroduction to happen.
If it is, if it is tabled and then reintroduced in January, it would then sit for another thirty days until February for an additional vote unless we remove the waiting period with a letter of necessity.
So if you, if we had a letter of necessity in January, if people's questions were answered, it could still be voted on in January and take effect at the end of January, begin of, beginning of February. So.
There is a way to make that happen, yes.
I just want to make sure everybody understood that unlike a resolution that's being pulled or being tabled, it's an extra process with a local law. So there is a, a motion to table this by Councilwoman James. Is there a second to that?
Councilman Karuba seconds the motion.
All right. Would, uh, so at this time, I'd like the clerk to please pull the council on tabling the resolution.
Okay.
Right?
Yep. Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Nay.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhardt?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. So the resolution is for one month, or at least, my suggestion would be that for the first or even second work session in January that, you know, we had, if those questions should be answered about the financial impact moving forward in terms of maybe a salary schedule put out for the both positions and the breakdown or breakout of how the finances would work for the two positions. I'm assuming that, I'm not sure, I'm not feeling that it's the move that people are questioning. It's the financial impact or possible financial impact. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think that's kind of where people are with it. So.
President Dulce, I'm also concerned is the impact on city operations.
Okay.
You know, as, as long as I've been on the council, we've had a director of public safety, and I think things have worked very well. I don't know what the intent would be as to how it would change city operations in terms of fire and, and public safety involving the police.
Again, that could be obviously something that is detailed, put out in terms of, it's my understanding that the public safety director basically did the budgeting and, you know, the administrative part of the fire department, but the day-to-day operations are handled by the deputy fire chief. So again, those things maybe should be more specifically spelled out so that members of the public would know as well as the council, and then everybody may have a, a, a more, higher level of comfort in, in moving. And again, we, we were there before. We moved it this way for particular reasons, and I understand the reasoning for moving it back, and I'm not opposed to moving it back, but again, if there's enough concern or enough questions, both financially and from, you know, how it's going to work standpoint, then, you know, let's take the time and make sure that we all understand it, and make sure the public understands it. So, okay, so.
Mr. Uh, Mr. President, I also, and it doesn't have to be answered this evening, but I know there was also a question of what would have happened to the status of the battalion chiefs in the fire department if they would move back to the union, I believe, or considered union workers or not.
Again, more questions that, that need to be answered on that.
And I, I think that again could be a financial implication that's not being addressed in this resolution.
Okay. Um, Corporation Council, Ramondo, again, you, you've seen my emails back and forth with civil service disagreeing with some of that and the fact that we have put Chief Jackson in, and that civil service job description states a civil service test. So that all needs to be clarified and ironed out as well. So there's many questions with that.
As an update to that, I was working with civil service. After discussions with them, they were able, if we want to change job descriptions to match the qualifications for Chief Jackson as far as the testing or lack thereof, because it is an appointed position, as well as, uh, the qualifications that we desire for deputy fire chief.
And that, that would make them appointed no longer civil service?
They, they would always be civil service, but they would still be appointed.
I, I'm going to need more clarification on that, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that or comments? Again, so Resolution twenty has been tabled for further discussion into the new year. So with that, that ends our resolutions from our standing committees. Do we have any report from special committees, a report from city officers, reports from council members, and any administrative boards? Is there any unfinished business to come before the council? Is there any new business? We don't have any resolutions under new businesses. Is there any other new business to come before the council? If not, I just wanted to take a minute. Kickoff is still, what, fifteen minutes away? I won't take fifteen minutes, but I just wanted to take this time to, as we end the year out, kind of thank members of the city council, the entire administrative team, the mayor, his department heads. This, twenty twenty's been an unprecedented year. I don't think we have to say too much more about that. I, I've been really proud of the way we've conducted our business under some very, very difficult and challenging circumstances. Everything from our situation with COVID. One of my biggest frustrations is the fact that we're sitting here on little Hollywood squares, and most of, we've had to do this for most of our meetings this year, and it's, it's difficult. Not having the public in front of us, not being able to interact with them in person. I know they're out there. They listen. They make comments, and we appreciate that. I know one of my goals going into this year was to have several forums in different parts of the city and parks and in different wards and schools, and obviously that couldn't happen this year. I'm hoping that hopefully maybe into the spring and this summer and towards the fall, we can resume that. Hopefully, we can resume going back to, going back home, being in our council chambers. Not only have we had Zoom meetings, we've met in the police conference room socially distanced with masks. We've been in the lobby socially distanced with masks, back on Zoom. We've put together a very difficult budget under, you know, tough circumstances this year and had to do most of that work online just like this. Very difficult to do when you're not sitting in the room together. Our committee meetings have been separated. You know, it's just, it's been a real, real challenge, and you throw on top of that, you know, we knew going into this year, having a new mayor, a new administration, I think if you look at the different department heads, a new corporation counsel, a new clerk, a new director of development, a new controller, a new fire deputy chief, a new police chief director of public safety. The list goes on and on, and, and they've done an admirable job of getting up to speed under terrible circumstances this year and doing the best they can to get their feet wet and learn the ropes, answer our questions and, 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 you know, and be effective. And when we look at what we've been able to give our constituents, you know, we delivering a budget, and again, we, you know, we haven't agreed on everything, even tonight, we didn't agree on everything, and that's okay. It's okay to disagree and to have discourse and dialogue, not only with the mayor. You know, Mayor Sunquist has a lot of new ideas and some, and things he'd like to see done, and, you know, the health insurance retire, for retirees is one. Parking changes downtown is another one, and I know, I understand he would be frustrated in that we didn't or couldn't move that forward just yet. Those are things that need to be worked on in the future, hopefully in a, in a year coming up that, that will be better than twenty twenty. Obviously, we have our financial challenges in front of us, but one of the things that, that I'm proud of is that when you look at what's going on nationally, what a mess it is, it's been, our state, and even locally in some of our areas, in even in Chautauqua County, where you see dysfunctional governments, people yelling and screaming at each other, people throwing people out of meetings, people quitting, people, you know, all sorts of negative things. We've been able to hold it together in some, again, unprecedented times, and my twenty-five years, this year has been the most challenging for many, many reasons. And I just wanted to take this time to personally thank the mayor, all the new department heads, all the old department heads, and particularly the council members for, you know, sticking to it and working hard and working together in, in a bipartisan fashion and trying to do what's best. And again, maybe we don't always agree on things, but at the end of the day, I think we all agree that we're trying to do what's best for the city. And so hopefully twenty twenty-one will be a better year for a lot of reasons. And again, a lot of these things were out of our control, but we've, we've done our best to hang in there and be troopers and make it work for, for the city and for our constituents. So again, I just want to thank everybody for a challenging but successful twenty twenty and hope for a better twenty twenty-one, both for people's health and, and financially for, for everyone. So everybody stay safe and have a happy new year. And if there's nothing else to come before the council.
I, I have.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. President, I just would like to just, you know, I, I thank you for everything that you say, and I echo everything you say, but I also would like us, because we are in unprecedented things and doing these Zoom meetings, I, for our voting sessions, I would hope that we can get back to having an open prayer before our meetings, because we know the government should fall on his shoulders. And so I would just hope that we will just keep in mind that if any time our nation needs prayer is now, and so I would just want us to remember to always open up with our opening prayer during voting sessions.
Again, we can, we can reinstate that regardless of, you know, whether we're on Zoom or wherever we're at for our voting sessions. We could do the pledge of allegiance. We could still do the, the prayer, so that, that's the point well taken.
I ran into Pastor Blair today from New Creation. He was asking when he'd be able to do it again, so.
We can invite them on and they can do it, or, you know, Councilwoman James or any other council person who feels comfortable could do that as well. So point well taken as we go into the new year. Is there anything else to come before the council? If not, I declare this meeting adjourned, and everybody have a safe and happy new year, and we'll see you all in the twenty twenty-one. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.